Good evening, everyone. Before we get started, I would like to inter-- there you are. I was searching for you. I would like to introduce Greg Shamburg to lead us in our invocation. I couldn't find where you were, sir.
Is this the right mic? Can everybody hear me okay? All right, well, welcome. It's a privilege to be here. I'm gonna pray real quick for us, so if you don't mind, bow your heads. Lord, just thank you for being a gracious God and allowing us to live in a city that we can pray before a board meeting and get your leadership and be good stewards of the money that you allow us to have, Lord. We just want to specifically pray for our students, our board, our faculty and staff, our administration, Lord. Lead us and guide us in everything that we do. Let us put students and people first in the decisions that we make. Thank you for a great community, Lord, and thank you for everything you do for us. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Thank you very much. And with that, we will call the board meeting to order with all board members present. Oh, except for Ms. Janelle Huff. Sorry. Thank you. Oh, and Mr. Loman. Hi. Hi. It's my first time here. Okay, moving into item 1B, presentations. Ms. Johnson?
Yes, it's our privilege tonight to have two flag salute leaders. One got snowed out in January, so the Hayes and Hoover students have agreed to do it together tonight. So first, I'm gonna introduce Ms. Jamie Jernigan, principal at Hayes, to introduce us to her student.
Good evening. This is Ms. Aria Chick. She is an excellent fifth grade student from Hayes Elementary, and I'm gonna let you, let her, talk a little bit about her things.
The school activities I am in are honor choir and safety patrol. This year, I also participated in Circle the State with Song as well as winning the Dare Essay Contest. This is my second year to be a member of the Enid Community Children's Chorus. I recently participated in a regional piano contest where I received a superior rating. This weekend, I will be competing at the state level in Shawnee. My hobbies include singing, art, reading, playing the piano, and being an active member of Bible Baptist Church. Overall, I am most proud that I was chosen to represent Hayes Elementary at this EPS board meeting. Thank you.
And Ms. Ashley Courier, fifth grade teacher at Hoover Elementary School, will introduce her student.
Hello. Our student for Hoover is Christian Saunders. He's a fifth grader in my class. I have the privilege of having this young man. He is bright, smart, creative. He's just a joy to have. He's in our action group. He's in our after-school STEAM program. He just is excited to learn. Anything you give him, he's just, he's just a sponge. He wants to learn. He has outside activities as well. He is a black belt, just earned his black belt this year in karate. I know he's very, very proud of that. Do you want to say a few words?
I think the teachers at Hoover are amazing. They're super nice, and I love all the activities that they give us. Like, there's always some sort of art each month. We always get to write poems. We're always doing fun activities in PE, and I just think my school is great.
You're gonna ask him, you're gonna say, "Please stand."
Please stand.
You're gonna bring the flag up, and then we're gonna say, "Attention, students." Okay, say, "Attention."
Attention.
Ten salute pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job, Ari and Christian. Might've started a new trend. That was great having both of you appear at once.
Our secondary spotlight student this evening is from Emerson Middle School, and Ms. Annie Heathman, principal, will introduce them.
Good evening. Our spotlight student is Taven Schumacher, and he has also been chosen by his eighth grade teachers as student of the month at Emerson.
Hello, my name is Taven Schumacher. I am an eighth grader at Emerson Middle School, and my time at Emerson has been lots of fun. They offer some amazing classes and extracurricular activities. Some activities that I do are wrestling, technological student association, robotics competitions, and now junior honor society, and the academic team. But there are many more to choose from. Some things I like to do in my free time are wood carving, building models, riding my bike, skateboarding, hanging out with my friends. But overall, I like that Emerson has lots of opportunities to do stuff in and out of the classroom. Because overall, Emerson's one of the most funnest schools I've been to. It's a lot of fun to go to. Glad I went there. And it's really all I have to say. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thanks, Taven. Thanks for coming this evening.
Our next group to recognize this evening is the Junior ROTC with Sergeant Nelson, and we're gonna let Sergeant Nelson have up to three minutes max.
I'm starting my timer right now, all right? They give me three minutes because they know I love these kids so much that I can talk about them all night. So I'm not offended by, at all. These guys are here tonight to be recognized for Broken Arrow competition that they went to. They won first place in color guard, and they won our very first first-place trophy in inspection. And they are here because they also had a unit evaluation. We get one, we're supposed to get one every three years, and they've got to exceed the standard, which is the highest. But since Broken Arrow, they've gotten two second-place trophies in armed color guard and unarmed color guard, and then this weekend, they went to Arkansas, and they won another first-place trophy in armed color guard, and third-place trophy in unarmed color guard. And they won third place, first time we ever placed in the female raider event, third place in the ruck, two-and-a-half-mile ruck. So, and it was a 40-pound ruck sack. So that's pretty impressive. This is a very impressive group of kids. Everything they do is to represent this town. We talk about that all the time. It's not about Enid Jr. ROTC, it's about representing Enid. They're very proud to be a representation of this, and they're very proud to be going to Nationals, and they plan on bringing home a first-place trophy, so... They are as follows. Ryland Brashear, Gunner Dryer, Tabitha Miller, Emily Roach, Aiden Rogers, Mackenzie Shoemaker, Mackenzie Stamper, Caleb Stringfield, Cheyenne Stufflebeam, Devon Taylor, Colton Throckmorton, and Tristan Wilson.
Colonel Murray, you ought to get up here. You're the other part of this. Congratulations, you guys. Let's give one more round of applause, and best of luck at Nationals.
Thank you all for your support. We really appreciate this school board.
He had to squeeze in that last little bit. Our next recognition of individuals tonight is our Enid High School swim team, the students that qualified for state. And Caroline Tile is their swim coach, and I'm gonna turn it over to her.
Okay, first off, I'd like to thank the board for your support of athletics and everything you do for these kids. We couldn't have done it without all of you. This year was really fun being a first-year head coach. I just graduated college this past summer, so being able to help these kids meant the world to me. They really, really proved day in and day out what it meant to be a plainsman or a pacer. They worked every single day and were sponges of learning how to get better. Swimming is super technical, and they all listened and worked as a team to get better. Overall, at state, we had a sixth-place finisher, Luke Rogers. He was actually 15th last year, so that was a huge improvement. He went from a 5900 backstroke to a 56.5, which in swimming as a senior, that's kind of unheard of at this level. Overall, the women also improved in everything. They won the conference championship, and the men got second. So I'd like to say our state qualifiers were Zane Bricks, Cadence Brochu, Lila Brown, Eben Cho, Jack Denny, Taylor Higbee, Cal Al Hooper, Thomas Kissinger, Cassanie Libida, Leila Nguyen, Hudson Plummer, Luke Rogers, and Lauren Simpson. And also our assistant coaches, we couldn't have done it without you as well. Thank you, guys.
Coach Tile, congratulations on a great season. You did an awesome job this year. And kids, excellent job this year, overall. All right, one more round of applause, guys.
Great job. Swimming's a hard sport. I had two swimmers at my house. Our last group of recognition is four individuals that we are extremely proud of, and I'm gonna invite Mr. Craig Ladell and Mr. Jeremy Heiss to come up, and I know Dr. Darrow wants to say a few words also.
I'll say a few words, I'll turn it over to you, Ms. Ladell, as kids come forward. First of all, this is something that Mr. Heiss and I both worked on two years ago. Dr. Floyd challenged us to try to put in a program to where our kids could get an associate's degree and a bachelor's degree, and we worked really hard on getting a game plan. Mr. Heiss pulled a lot of strings, I know, with NOC, and it's so awesome to see the fruits of our labor, and just so proud of you kids actually putting the hard work and the dedication, because that truly is a lot of time, energy, and effort, and you all, you four should be commended for that. And Ms. Ladell, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Darrow, board members, amazing audience. We had a great crowd in here tonight. Kind of hard to follow ROTC and then swim both on fire, but this group, this foursome are really special, guys. And as Dr. Darrow shared there, to be the first group to step up and actually achieve this, they're gonna earn their associate's degree before they actually get their high school diploma, because just the way graduation will work. That's pretty special right there. And I was in on those conversations with Dr. Darrow and Mr. Heiss, and I'm sitting there going, "This is amazing, this is awesome." But part of me was like, "Yeah, I'll believe it when I see the ones actually get their associates," just because that's a lot to achieve and still get your high school diploma. And right enough, on cue, four of them on, right on deck, and they've absolutely nailed it. So I would like Mr. Heiss to say a little bit about this. But our four students, Hagan Childs, Eva Cross White, Lucas Martinez, and Esteban Maxwell. Can we give them a huge round of applause, because it's an amazing achievement, guys? I do have to give a little anecdote before I turn it over to Mr. Heiss, that Dr. Darrow was checking with me, "Are all these students coming?" I was like, "I think so," because I don't get to see them very often. Do cross paths with Eva a little bit with athletics, but these guys are off-campus and they're earning their associate's degree, so well done, you guys. Mr. Heiss, you wanna say a quick word, sir?
Yeah, I'd like to congratulate these, these fine young people to take on that kind of a sacrifice and a commitment, and then follow through and get it completed. I'm very proud of them. It's certainly a challenge, being able to complete 60 hours of college credit along with their high school requirements, and many of them are active in extracurricular activities as well. They certainly have made sacrifices that are, that are gonna benefit them tremendously moving forward. I'd also like to congratulate you guys, because without the commitment that you've made into providing these opportunities, it wouldn't happen. You guys have invested in the university center, you've invested in purchasing textbooks, the Davis Scholarship to be able to provide opportunities for folks. We've taken what you guys have done here, and we've tried to take that out into other communities and get them to emulate what you guys have done. So it's very impressive, the work that you guys have completed, and I appreciate all the hard work that you and I both put into that, Dr. Darrow. It's there now, and hopefully we have more folks that follow through and get that completed. But I would just like to point out, if you go to the Oklahoma State Regents for Higher Education website right now, and you look at what one year of research university education is gonna cost these students, it's just under $26,000. It's about $26,000, or $25,800 and some dollars for a year at one of our research institutions. With the tuition waivers that were provided for concurrent enrollment, and with the fact that you guys purchased textbooks for them and everything else that you contribute to their, their doing this, I think that the, approximately the 33 hours that they had to pay for to complete the degree cost them just over $4,000. So with $52,000 of what it would've cost them at a research institution, they got for $4,000. They saved a tremendous amount of money, and if they want to enter into the workforce sooner, they have that option. Or if they want the flexibility to go pursue a master's degree or something else, I'm just proud of them. They've certainly created a great head start for themselves, and so I just want to congratulate them once again.
Thank you for those that came and are leaving. We will miss you. But moving on, item two, audience to visitors. We had no one sign up this evening. Takes us to item three, the superintendent's report. Dr. Darrow?
Okay, perfect. Gonna roll right in with a strategic plan report from Ms. Garcia and Mrs. Fields, and I'll give them a short introduction. First of all, board members, you should have a flyer there at your area. Let me show, that looks like this, excuse me. And it describes a lot of the outreach that Ms. Garcia and Ms. Fields do on a daily basis, and I just want to brag on them real quick before they report. There's so many times that a student might need some medical help, whether it be hearing aids, or see a dentist, or go to the eye doctor, and these ladies will go get that kiddo out of the class and get them to the, and I don't know how they get the free medical treatment, but they do. They know the people, and then also, they do so much translation for families, whether it be enrollment or when issues strike. They're just great partners for the community and a great liaison. So saying all that, I'm gonna turn it over to you, Ms. Garcia.
Thank you so much. So my name is Brenda Garcia. Good evening, board, and I am one of our family resource community liaisons, and we have the privilege to build the relationships with our families, and not just, not just any family, but our most at-risk families. So the students that are coming to our country seeking asylum, we get to assist them and connect them with the resources that they need to hopefully build on what they need first, so that they can be academically successful. And so our job is to connect them to the correct resource. And we have, you have on your handout the list of resources that we help coordinate, and I'm gonna talk about the first two, which are the community outreach resources and the academic resources. And so for the community outreach, this involves meeting with our community, and so we're a part of diverse coalition, coalitions such as the Micronesian Coalition, where we get together with specific leaders of the Micronesian community and... where we get together with specific leaders of the Micronesian community and talk about what are some of the issues that we are seeing at the school, that they're seeing in their community, and find solutions to those issues. And so that has been a great coalition to be a part of. Academic resources, this is where we, our hands are all on deck because our students, we don't want them to fall back. And so EPS does a great job specifically with our secondary students to offer opportunities for them to be engaged, for them to have support. And so I want to talk about something that, this is the third year we've had it, which is our Newcomer Academy. And I want to brag on it because it is an amazing opportunity for newcomer students. And it is open to our middle school students, which currently we have 34 students enrolled in the academy and our high school students, 32 enrolled. This program is open for them to attend for one full year. They go half a day and then they go back to their home site. And at the academy, they're learning language skills, cultural, what, what's the U.S.? What's it like living in the United States? And this is where we can connect with them and say, okay, what resources are you lacking? How can we connect you, your family, to the right place? And the Newcomer Academy is thriving. It's growing and we are happy that it's here. We're happy that Enid Public Schools can offer such a thing as a newcomer academy. And so I want to brag on that. We also have the clubs. Students can be a part of the Islander Club, the Hispanic Club, the multicultural choir, which I, I know you guys are familiar with. So those are great opportunities that are open for our students to be a part of. And those are some of the resources. And Jennifer is going to share the rest with you. Thank you.
I just want to talk a little bit more about the Newcomer Academy, which is an amazing program for these kids. And we really take them where they are. And Brenda does a great job. We do an intake of every student and see, do you need glasses? How, you know, can we get you enrolled in Sooner Care? And that depends on different immigration statuses. But newcomer is just an amazing place because you get to see these people that are actually living the American dream every single day. And that's why they're here. So it's really exciting. And I'm going to talk a little bit about the Health, Medical, and Social Services part of your handout. And we meet those kids where they are. And Brenda and I are district-wide, so we get to assist every principal, counselor, and school nurse at every site and just plug those resources in where they are needed. We have been seeing a greater need, I would say, with some of the newcomers. And then, then we just plug the resources in where needed. The social services, we just get to really, by being out in the community and being involved in some of those coalitions, we have great partnerships with the Health Department, CDSA, many agencies that help us with Sooner Care, the newcomer program. And then, you know, if a student need, and a family needs WIC and SNAP benefits, we know exactly where to send them. So Brenda and I are a little team and we have been since our days at Longfellow. And we just keep on, and Dr. Robinson, our little team, we just kind of keep on getting the kids where they need to go. So, and, and get their needs met where they are. So we are happy to answer any questions that you guys have. But thank you for having us. And if you have any questions, let us know.
I don't have a question, but thank you so much. Because you guys have such energy and you can tell. I mean, it's obvious, you probably connect very well with the family. So thank you.
Well, both ladies work a lot behind the scenes, too. And a lot of times we bring them problems and they go find solutions. So thank you for what you do every day, every day, ladies. Okay, we'll go to item B, enrollment numbers. Like to report back, our enrollment's up nine from last month, so we're at 7,602. And again, that's up nine from the previously in January. So again, I say enrollment is healthy. And also, speaking of enrollment, we are now in the process of looking at pre-enrollment for next year and building up staff for next year. So that's always a number that we always make sure that we keep a close eye on our target on there, for sure. So everything's good and healthy in enrollment and we'll start building the staff shortly for next year. Moving on to item C is Mr. Rader, and he's going to talk a little bit about our Head Start Program at the Big Five, and that's going to be starting here shortly.
I know I reported last month, didn't have a lot of information. And it seemed like, I think, within five days, I got an email from Lori Birch, who's the Assistant Director at, at Big Five. And they have found the personnel that they need for that position, which is kind of what we're all looking for whenever we start something new, is the personnel. So those personnel, I think, have gone through the background checks and have been established. Since then, they've toured Carver, I think, three times now. They have a few different standards than we have, like as far as just some of the upkeep of the building. And so they've asked some things that we just need to upgrade and Sam and his team have been working on that. I think we have to have like a handrail or something like that put on the outside, add a little bit of paint to the classroom, just minor things. So we're in the process of doing that. They also brought in their, they have to have, they have a few different standards for their playground equipment. So they brought in one of their, one of their outside individuals that inspects the playground equipment, just to make sure that we have everything that we need. So that's kind of where we're at with that. As soon as we get those improvements in, I know they're out there already taking applications for students and everything. So I don't have an exact timeframe, but I believe by the end of this, this year, we'll have a class established. If not, I know for a fact we'll definitely be ready to go at the beginning of next year. So we're excited about that.
Perfect. Thanks, Mr. Rader. Any questions? Okay, we'll move right along. I'm going to talk a little bit about Eisenhower Point D there, letter D. Just want to remind everybody, we are in the design to build portion of this. And we recently had a small victory that the Department of Defense gave us the official application. And so Becky, Sam, and I have been emailing back and forth. We've submitted our application. They kicked it back for some clarifications, some dates, and then they kicked it back for some formatting issues. And so we're playing that game, but it's slow and steady. We are making progress. 30 to 45-day turnaround before it officially gets approved is what they told us. So with any luck, I mean, honestly, I think the first of April would be very realistic if we can get something done there. So I'll keep, I'll continue to keep you guys posted, but we're, we're getting there. Slow and steady steps, but we're moving in the right direction. So that's a good thing. Any questions on that? And again, that's only the design to build portion. That's just the design portion. Once we get that done, then we'll work on the build next. Okay, next is a report from Dr. Crowley. And I'm going to talk a little bit about this Conmigo, which is through the Khan Academy. And let her, turn it over to her. But you guys probably have heard AI or artificial intelligence is everywhere. And we had a wonderful partnership this year with Oklahoma State University and the Brock Foundation to let us sample some of this AI through Khan Academy in our geometry class. And this is something that we are going to have to learn how to handle and how to integrate in our school. It's not going anywhere, for sure. And this has just been a great partnership that started this second semester. And I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Crowley, if you don't mind.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Yes, as Dr. Darrow said earlier this year, we were invited to participate in this pilot program from OSU and the Brock Foundation to use, utilize Conmigo and, and AI or artificial intelligence into the classroom. We selected the geometry students and teachers at the high school to be part, part of the program for pilot for us. And the way that we are incorporating that is through, the, the students are using it as more, like an opportunity to have a personal tutor as they go through and work through their content and math specifically for us. And the, the students will, are prompted to put in a question. And at first, we were wondering how that would look as a return. We didn't want the students to have a direct answer given to them, and it does not. Conmigo has set up the program so that it got, it offers guiding questions that helps the student come to a solution instead of just giving them the student as other kinds of chat formats and programs out there may offer. Teachers can utilize the AI program through Conmigo as either to supplement their current content that they're working on and studying in geometry, or they could use it also as a differentiation tool to help support and reinforce some of the skills that the students are needing to just kind of hone, hone up on and practice a little more, or to extend and help them to get ready for their next level of math. So we've also had a great opportunity as our implementation team to work with OSU. We meet with them and the other schools participating. There's a small handful of schools across the state have, that have been invited. And we are one of those lucky ones. And we, we meet every two weeks through Zoom with OSU and the other schools. And we talk over just different topics that are associated with AI and how that looks in the educational setting and how we can become familiar ourselves with it. You know, as Dr. Darrow said, we are learning this tool as well as the students. And we are excited, though, for this opportunity to see not only how it can help our students to really enhance their geometry skills right now, but also, you know, like we said, it's, it's not going to go away. So how do we help them and us become comfortable with it in a way that will, you know, let them be successful in their future pathways wherever that may lead?
Any questions for Dr. Crowley? Awesome. Well, thank you for taking this on. I know it's been a, quite a task. And thank you for taking the lead on this, Dr. Crowley. And I believe you're presenting at OSU, maybe, is that right? Are you on a panel in April?
Yes, April 8th and 9th, they've invited us to participate and just, you know, kind of learn all things AI. And all, all of us are in the pool swimming together, so we're all just trying to help each other.
Awesome. Well, thanks again for coming.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, move down to item F. I'd like to just kind of brief the board real quick on bond committee update. I've got a trifold there at your desk area. Everything is moving right along as, as you would anticipate. Been speaking to staffs about the upcoming bond issue. Additionally, continuing to work with Amber through Oklahoma Secondary School Board Association. She's been helping us a lot with setting up a timeframe on, on rolling out important dates and information. We, next week, we are actually going to start sending home with the kids some blank voter registration packets to make sure that everybody can get enrolled and registered as a voter. That'll be making a push here with the parents next week. Then our next one, I believe, Ms. Johnson, is early voting is after that. That's another deadline upcoming. Also, as we get closer, there's a theme that, that I personally like and I think the whole group likes is mine plus nine. And that's really a concerted effort, is if we'll all get 10 voters to go out and vote that day, mine plus nine, it kind of had a little catchphrase, I liked it. So that's something that you'll probably see as we get closer to the April 2nd deadline. But happy to answer any questions you might have. But again, we're trending right along. Jane, did I hit everything? Okay. Perfect. Okay, just want to remind you, between now and our next board meeting in March, we have spring break, and that'll be March 11th through the 15th. Just so everyone's clear, Autry and us are on the same spring break, but NOC and us are not, and the state universities are, are not. It's a different week. So some of those kids are going to have to be a little selective on what they do on spring break. But that's the upcoming 11th through the 15th. And then again, that'll be, our, our board meeting will be after that, before I see you again. The next handout at your area is item H, Senior Events. Be sure and save the dates, especially for graduation. Our first option's going to be there, De Bruh Selby Stadium at 7:30. If we can't have it there, we're going to have it at the Expo Center, but we will get it done that night. Obviously, love to have it outdoors at the Selby Stadium if at all possible. And also, on that flyer, you can see the other dates, May Fete, Lincoln Appreciation Night, it's always a great night, Baccalaureate, Senior Awards Summit, et cetera. Okay, that takes me to item I, the last one for me, and that's Legislative Breakfast. We had a very good Legislative Breakfast, January 26th. We had good representation from our legislators. Mr. Caldwell, Pfeifer, Peterson, Dubrinsky, we're all present, either there in person or virtually. And we had a good group of Northwest Oklahoma administrators there as well. So it was good discussion. Our next two are Friday, March 1st, that'll be two weeks, excuse me, a week from this coming Friday. And then our last one will be May 10th. So if you'd like to attend that, just let me know. I'll get you the link. And again, I appreciate the legislators taking the time to meet with us as they go into session. And that is it for me.
Very good. Thank you. That takes us to item four, Regular Business. And we have item four A, 1 through 8C. And we're going to pull out, I'm going to remove item four A, 8D for a separate vote. But I will take a motion to approve item four A, 1 through 8C. Do I have a motion?
Let's.
Oh, do you want to do the other?
Yep. Just backwards.
Oh, backwards. Sorry.
We're going to remove C.
C. Removing C, but I need to add D.
That's right.
Okay, so let me rephrase that. Do I have a motion to approve item four A, 1 through 8B and including A, 8D, not including A, 8C? Okay. Now, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Matt Sampson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Randy Long. Any discussion? All those, no, sorry, not all those in favor. We are going to vote. Randy Long?
Yes.
Chad Mance?
Yes.
Tori Turnbow?
Yes.
Matt Sampson?
Yes.
Joe Blackwood?
Yes.
Yes. And the motion carries. So now we will look at item four A, 8C. Do I have a motion for approval? And then we will go into discussion. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Matt Sampson. Do I have a second? Anyone?
Second.
Second by Chad Mance. Okay. And is there any discussion? Yes.
Madam President, I would like to address this item as I discussed with you earlier. And then I want to offer a second, if that would be allowable. I want to preface my comments by saying I made a mistake when I looked at this policy and decided to look at the statute that were cited. And so that's the problem when you've got an attorney. I could have asked that we table this item, but I am not doing that intentionally because I think we need to come out of here with a policy tonight. And so I'm going to make my comments, I'm going to offer an amendment to the motion on the floor. If that amendment is not seconded, or if it's seconded and the vote goes against it, then I would hope that we would go on, on the motion. And again, something is better than nothing in this situation. I also want to preface my comments by saying Superintendent Darrow and OSSBA and staff attorneys have worked today because I didn't let them know my concerns about this policy until this morning. And I had several concerns, and all of those but two have, we've been able to address. So I want my fellow board members to know that I respect the process. I respect Dr. Darrow and the administrative staff and their recommendations, OSSBA and staff attorneys. This is nothing, this is just, I see it differently. You all may not, and that's fine. I just felt strong enough that I needed to voice my thoughts and opinion. So the main thing is, if you look at the first paragraph of the motion and the proposed policy, it says it shall be the policy of the Enid Board of Education that no sectarian or religious doctrine shall be taught or inculcated into the curriculum or activities of the school. You can see me later if you don't know what inculcated means. I had to look it up. That is verbatim from Title 70OS, Section 11-101. Interestingly enough, in the reference at the bottom of the proposed policy, it cites 11-101.1, 11-101.2, but not 11-101. So I feel like that needs to be added to the reference. Back to that first sentence, which is again, just verbatim out of the statute. But the rest of that statute says, "But nothing in this section shall be construed to prohibit the reading of the Holy Scriptures." So my concern that I haven't been able to alleviate is that by implication and leaving it out, we are saying that you cannot read the Holy Scriptures in school and not violate our policy. And we may choose to do that, Board, but I think it's important to understand, and then we're going beyond what Oklahoma law provides, which we can do. But this is not merely just enacting a policy that just incorporates the required following of Oklahoma law. So with that said, I would move to amend the policy and therefore the motion to approve the policy to provide that that first sentence reads, "It shall be the policy of the Enid Board of Education that no sectarian or religious doctrine shall be taught or inculcated into the curriculum or activities of the school. However, nothing in this section shall be construed to prohibit the reading of the Holy Scriptures." Period. And then the second sentence would pick up, and I realize it says, however- over wordsmith it. Then the second part of my motion to amend would be to include in the reference with the two statutes cited there, by adding a reference to 70OS, Section 11-101.
Okay, we have a motion for an amendment. Is there a second? Second by Joe Blackwood?
Can I ask Randy to repeat his statement for the record?
Absolutely.
Not the whole thing, just what you're having added, so we can
Sure.
get it correct.
So my motion to amend.
I'm trying to get all the words right.
No, first sentence. So we're going to add to the end of the first sentence the following, comma, however, nothing in this section shall be construed to prohibit the reading of the Holy Scriptures, period. And then to add at the end, under the heading Reference, 70OS, Section 11-101.
Okay, I'm going to ask one more clarifying statement. So in the policy, the second sentence begins with however as well.
Yes.
For grammatical purposes, and I'm asking this as a point of clarification, should we strike that however and begin the new second sentence with those?
Sure. That would be, that would read better grammatically. I just
Okay. Thank you.
So both our motion and our second are free to. Okay, is there any discussion from anyone on this? About the amended?
If there's more than one amendment being proposed, do we need to vote on separately?
I, we could. I put him in one.
No, no, no. Yours, I'm considering both of them to be one. I also have one. So I'm figuring, do we need to one vote and then?
Yes.
Okay.
So vote on the amendment, and then if we'd like to propose another amendment, we'll do that as well. Okay. Okay. So any further discussion on the amendment proposed by Mr. Long?
Let me, let me make another point of clarification. Sorry.
We've got the
So if, if, if we vote on what Mr. Long has presented, then the policy will be voted on as approved or not approved based on that vote. And then you're going to have another amendment. So that would not be accurate to do that.
No. No, if my amendment passes, now on the table will be the policy as amended, and then it would be appropriate for anyone else to offer additional amendments.
Okay, so we're only voting on the amendment, not the policy?
Right.
Very good. Good. Just want to make sure we got that all clear.
Yes.
Yes.
Amendment? And now? What is the new amendment? Okay. Additional amendments?
Basically, whenever I read this, I wanted to make sure that we defined non-instructional time, given the number of coaches, students, and whatever, specifically a coach out of Washington, within the last 10 years that got in trouble for praying at a game. And it was claimed that that was instructional time, because it's a practical application to his job as a coach. I wanted to offer this amendment so that we could define, excuse me, that we could provide the ability for a policy that clarifies that if a student or somebody is at an extracurricular event, that they can't get in trouble, that an administrator, coach, whatever, another lawyer can't claim that that student or that individual was outside or going against our policy. And do I need to read my, so my proposal is that we start a new paragraph under the first, and that it reads, "The board defines instructional time as specific periods during which students actively engage in learning activities or receive direct instruction. This includes efforts dedicated to tasks and lessons aimed at improving knowledge, skills, and understanding in subjects such as, but not limited to, mathematics, science, language arts, and social studies. It also encompasses events or field trips with a primary educational focus. Extracurricular activities are not categorized as instructional time. Nevertheless, both students and employee conduct are subject to the policies of the school, partner organizations, as well as applicable state and federal statutes."
Okay. So we have a motion for an addition to our amended version. Did I get all my words correct? By Joe. Do I have a second? Do I have a second? I have no second. And therefore, your proposed addition?
Fails.
Has the I, I represent that there's any I, I do feel like, something will happen. I'm curious as to how this is going to stay long. So the law of the state statute is that if there's a failure, my duty is to make sure where we're going to go. I understand that, but I can't Tori, would you check your microphone, just to make sure it's on? Oh, sorry.
Okay.
Was I getting in trouble? Sorry, my microphone's on. Okay, so, motion has carried. Do we even have to vote on the amended policy since we had the amendment approved? Okay, so now I will entertain a motion to approve item four A, 8C as amended.
We already have a motion on the floor.
Oh, I do have a motion.
It's been amended.
It's been amended. So we have a motion, and our motion was by Randy, and our second, no, who was our first? Oh, our motion was by Matt, and our second was by Chad. I have my notes all over the place right now. Any further discussion? It's okay. Thank you for the clarification.
It's good to say as amended.
As amended.
Motion as amended.
Motion as amended. Okay, so we will vote. Randy Long?
Yes.
Chad Mance?
Yes.
Tori Turnbow?
Yes.
Matt Sampson?
Yes.
Joe Blackwood?
Yes.
And the amended motion carries. Whew, that might have been the most intense vote. It's okay.
Well, thank you all for doing this. This will help our accreditation, which is coming up. And thank you all.
Okay, moving on to item four B, Discussion and Possible Action to Approve the District Financial Report for January 2024. Dr. Robinson?
For the sake of the audit, I'm going to make this very quick. So we are, we are once again in a really good financial position. I am going to offer a word of caution on our, on our finances, and that's with the gross production that comes in. Of course, it's a chargeable. I'm not seeing any way that lack of gross production tax coming in is going to impact our budget in negative light. It just might come in at less than originally expected because of where we're seeing gross production as overall in the state and overall as a country. Not a negative impact to the budget, just something to bring to light to you guys. Also, want to bring to attention, we did have a, a purchase in this last go around of a new video board for the auditorium. So while we have video boards at all of our sports facilities, athletic events, we are now going to have the same for our Fine Arts program. It's a portable video board, so it can be moved out of the auditorium into the black box. It can be moved into the gym for Teacher of the Year events. It's slated to arrive just before spring break, hopefully sometime in that, that timeframe. It's, it's a really big deal. In case you didn't know, I didn't know it was a big deal. So I'm telling you it's a big deal, but it's because of Ms. Johnson's son, who told me it's a really big deal. He's, he said that for the musical, it's going to save him two to three weeks on building props, building backgrounds and scenery, because it's all digitized. So I think it's 19 feet by 29 feet. So it's big. It's as big as the screen in the auditorium when it's down.
I'm just going to be curious to see it rolling down the hallway?
No.
Pretty large.
It comes in one foot squares. So we had to put it together kind of like a Lego set.
Can it be made different sizes?
You can, yeah, you can scale it down to different sizes. Kind of, oh, we can do all kinds of things with it. And it's, it's meant for indoor. That's why it's able to be used like this. So sorry to like, take all the steam out of the finance report and the audit with this awesome video board, but I'm, I'm telling you, it's a big deal. It's, it's a great purchase for fine arts, and it's, it's really going to be a game changer, I think, for Enid Public Schools, because what we're told, I can't, I cannot say this with the fact that we might be the first school district in Oklahoma to actually have a video board for our fine arts and our theater productions. So I'm really excited about that. So thank you guys again for your support of all that and what you guys do.
Okay, item, oh, four C. Oh, oh, yes. Do I have a motion to approve the District Financial Report? I'm getting, I'm getting ready for the audit so much. I just can't slow down.
So moved.
Okay.
So moved.
Motion by Matt Sampson?
Second.
Second by Randy Long. Any further discussion on the financial report? And we will vote. Randy Long?
Yes.
Chad Mance?
Yes.
Tori Turnbow?
Yes.
Matt Sampson?
Yes.
Joe Blackwood?
Yes.
And the motion carries. Taking us to item four C, Discussion and Possible Action to Approve the Report of the Independent Audit of Fiscal Year 2023 Transactions for Enid Public Schools. Dr. Robinson?
I'm going to turn it over to Jay.
We're going to start straight up.
I'm Jay States with S&amp;B CPAs. This is my partner, Bill Busch, and we'll go through the audit this year. We did it a little different this year. We came over and spent three or four days in your office. I think it worked out real well. I don't think I want to stay very much longer. I wouldn't be able to get out of there with all the food. Pages four, five, and six are your first opinion letter. You have three opinion letters, since you're a uniform guidance, which means you spend over 750,000 of federal funds. The first opinion, it's an adverse opinion for, for the federal government, because we don't present it in generally accepted accounting principles. We present it as required by the state of Oklahoma. It's a modified cash basis. That means we record the revenues when we receive them, and we record the expenditures when we write the PO or encumber them. It's a qualified opinion, because we don't show general fixed assets. We don't have a tax return as a school. We expend those, we buy those items, we expense them in the current, in the year we buy them, we use them up, we put them surplus, and then we buy new. Page seven is your balance sheet. We show the cash and cash equivalents in each fund, the general fund, special revenue, which is the building fund, and the municipal tax fund, debt service, capital project, trust and agency. And then down in the middle, we show the warrants payable at the end of the year, and the reserve for incomerses. And down at the bottom, we show the fund balances. The unassigned is only in the general fund. That's where we pay all our bills from, our operations. The rest are restricted to the, what funds uses they can be used for. Page eight is your income statement. We show your sources of revenue for each fund. In the general fund, $75 million. There's 14 million from the federal government and 43 from the state government. We show your expenditures, 73 million. A lot of that is payment for teachers, for salaries, for teaching supplies, and for buses. So that probably adds up to 80-some percent of your expenditures. We bring back appropriations that were lapsed from last year of 389,000. We had an increase in the general fund, 1,977,000. We had a decrease in the special revenue to 45,000, 4,500, increase in debt service of 48,000, and increase in capital projects to 397. That's due to the selling bonds. Page nine, basically the same thing as page eight, only it's a budget actual. You can see there was no changes in the budget during the year. If there had been, the board would have had to approve those supplemental appropriations, but we could have spent those funds. So you would have known about that. Page 10 through, find the end here, 19, is your notes to your finance, financial statements. If you haven't read them, you need to. There's a lot of good information about your financial, your school system in there. On page 13, general long-term debt. Have combined purpose bonds of 23, 900, 9,645,000. Those pay off in July 25. 9,385,000 of bonds in '22, those pay off this year, May of '24. Have scheduled semi annual rent and acquisition payments. These are for your lease purchase. Those pay off September 24. Have another lease purchase with the Garfield County Educational Authority. Those pay off September 31. And then, then the LED lighting paid off this year. Page 18, Teachers Retirement. There's a lot of information in there, but we, down at the bottom, we contributed $6,298,000 this year for teachers' retirement, and for your employees and your teachers. 6,345,22 and 5,800,021. Turn it over to page 20. This is your balance sheet for your special revenue. This is a breakout in special revenues on page seven. Again, we show the cash and cash equivalent investments. We had $3 million in the building fund and 1,700 in the municipal tax. And again, down at the bottom, we have the fund balance, 3,200,000 in the building fund, 1,729,000 in the municipal tax. Combined purpose, or the capital projects, this is a breakout of your capital projects on page seven. We have three bonds, have 53,000 in the 2016 bond fund, 8,158,000 in 2010, and 1,998 in 2016. A3, this is a breakout of your trust and agency funds. Enid Activity Fund has 1,378,000. Lunch Fund, which has to zero out at the end of the year. And Gift Activity Fund has 154,000. And I forgot what, Sam, what's the other, we call it the Trust and Fund 50, which is your endowment fund, 427,000. Again, we will not show those on the balance sheet, because those don't belong to the school, or on the income statement. Those will only be show up on the balance sheet. Schedule B1, we show the income statement for the building fund, the municipal tax fund. We show the revenues and expenditures, and then the fund balance down at the bottom. Page 24, this is a breakdown of your capital project funds. For your income statement on page eight, we show what we received, which is basically interest in each one of those funds from the local. And then we sold bonds of 7,870,000 and 1,775,000 this year. Schedule C1, this is a budget to actual for page nine on the special revenue. Again, if there would have been any supplementals, you would have had to approve those before we could have expended the funds. Pages 25, or no, 26, 27, 28, and 29, these are your activity funds. Each sponsor is responsible for the same activities as the treasurer and the encumbrance clerk. They have to receipt those funds to the student. Then daily, they have to bring those funds to the activity fund custodian. When those funds reach $100, then activity fund custodian is required by law to deposit those. And then they have to reissue, get a PO, get it approved before they can purchase items. And then they have an invoice, get it signed. That way, if something happens to those items, we know where, who to go talk to to find them. So they, there's a lot of responsibility. So they, there's a lot of responsibility, and we look at these items really hard because there's cash. That's where the most risk is, cash. Everything else is pretty well direct deposit, but these are cash. And if something happens to those funds, the school's not responsible. Students aren't responsible. That sponsor's going to be responsible, so we do that to protect them. Pages 30 and 31, these are the donation and gifts. Again, those are the same thing. There was 154,000 at the end of the year in that. Lunch Fund, zeroed out, there's 331,000 revenue and 331,000 of expenses. Page 35, this is your schedule of expenditures of federal awards. We started the year, we had $391,000 to expend. That's because we, back in '20, we got all those funds from the state on, for the lunch and child nutrition. Everybody was free, but they just kept sending us money, so now we got to spend it. So it was 1,573,000 to spend at the beginning of the year. We received 15,784,000. We spent 14,992,000. We still have 1,535,000 in the lunch fund to spend. And you're not the only one in that situat, everybody's got that problem. Page 37 and 38, this is where we look at everything else. We look at your payroll, we look at your teachers' retirement, read your board minutes. We look at bids, anything and everything. Page 39 and 40. This is the opinion later on, Uniform Guidance. It's unqualified. And if you turn over to page 41, there is no findings. We looked at IDAB and all your COVID funds. Of those, we have to look at 40% of those, of that 14 million or almost 15 million dollars. So we have to look at 40% of those expenditures. We looked at about 65% of the expenditures. Is there any questions? Try to keep it short and sweet.
Thanks, Jay. That's good news.
And we enjoyed working with your staff. They do a really good job, so.
Thank you. Okay. I need a motion for item four C. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Randy Long. Second by Chad Mance. Any discussion? Okay, let's vote. Randy Long.
Yes.
Chad Mance.
Yes.
Tori Turnbow.
Yes.
Matt Sampson.
Yes.
Joe Blackwood.
Yes.
And the motion carries. That is great news. Thank you. Item five, new business. Do we have any new business? None. Item six, reports, items of information, board comments and/or questions. Colonel Little.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to say for the young man from Hoover Elementary School, he is the very definition of a sharp dressed man. He looks, his suit and his tie, I'm like, okay, he's going to be a board, a board member somewhere someday. So if you know him or his parents, please pass it on to them. Good job on them. But otherwise, thank you as always for the updates early on Eisenhower and the school there. I know that's moving along very nicely. And again, I'm always, excuse me, just appreciate being able to listen in on the updates of the school, particularly the financials and where everything is going and how it's moving. Otherwise, I don't have any further comments. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Board members?
I'll just say thank you to Dr. Robinson and his staff. That is, as far as I can remember, the first time.
With no findings.
Since I've been on the board with no findings, so that's awesome.
I would have to agree.
Thank you.
Good job. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, item seven, our next regular meeting is scheduled for March 25, 2024 at 6:00 PM, right here in the Administrative Services Center boardroom. Item eight, discussion and possible action to approve a proposed executive session in conference room 123 to discuss the employment of those individuals and/or positions listed on the attached Exhibit A and possible purchase or appraisal of real property. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Matt Sampson. Second by Chad Mance. Any discussion? And we will vote. Randy Long.
Yes.
Chad Mance.
Yes.
Tori Turnbow.
Yes.
Matt Sampson.
Yes.
Joe Blackwood.
Yes.
And we are headed to executive session.